Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 14th regular meeting of the Board of Education. I'm Kate Borninski. Happy Spring. Nice to see everybody here. We have a full house. I would like to welcome my fellow board members and ask them to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out.
Hi, I'm Anupam Chudzu. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for coming this evening.
Patty McCoyn, thank you for being here on this lovely night.
Hi, I'm John Lazzaro. It's Sidhu. Thank you for coming out.
Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Elizabeth Adams, and thank her for the work of taking the minutes at our meetings. Also, the man behind the scenes, Charlie Jones. We appreciate Charlie for taping our meetings for those that cannot be here in attendance. I'd like to ask the remaining staff members to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening, friends and colleagues. Nick Brandon, Executive Director, Communications and Marketing. Good to see everybody.
Hi, I'm W. P. Oz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, Liz Vartanian-Gibbs, Human Resources. Welcome.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Kurt Tiscuit, Executive Director of Student Services.
Hello, I'm Mike Bender, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Heather Colombo, President, Education Association.
Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda and approval of adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion, please, on action item 1905978.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda, action item 190578.
Second.
Okay. The motion was made by Member Brooks and second -- or by Member Lazzarowitz, excuse me, sorry, and seconded by Member Brooks. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Merritt, would you like to take us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes. This evening, the consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have retirements and resignations. We have the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on April 30th, 2019. We have a field trip out of country for your consideration this evening. And we have the first readings of Policies 2271, Post-Secondary Dual Enrollment Option Program, Policy 5350, Student Suicide, Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements, Policy 5630.01, Student Seclusion and Restraint, Policy 6350, Prevailing Wage Coordinator, and Policy 7250, Naming New Facilities.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
At this time, I would like to recognize some fine educators from Plymouth-Canton Community Schools who are retiring at the end of the school year. And if you are here this evening with us, please stand up, because I've noticed a couple of you in the audience. So first, Cecilia Aquolina. She is the vocational education teacher at Canton High School, and she's retiring after 23 years here in our district. Congratulations. Michelle Brunch -- Michelle Brunch, high school counselor at Salem, is retiring after 13 years of service. Kathleen Myers is retiring from Liberty Middle School. Over 33 years of service in our district. Thank you so much. Anthony Sterletz, he is a geophysical science teacher at Plymouth High School. He's retiring after 28 years of service. Tony Stumpo, who teaches physical education as well as science at Discovery Middle School, is retiring after 29 years of service. I would like to personally thank our teachers for their service to our school district, supporting our students, our staff, and our families together. That is over 126 years of service. So thank you so much.
Next on our agenda, we're at Letter B, celebrating success. And tonight, Member Kehoe is the presenter. And I'll let him tell you more.
Great, thank you. This evening, celebrating success is we'll honor West Middle School teacher Mark Trezak for all he does for students, parents, and staff in our community. We asked that Mark come up to the podium at this time, along with West's parents, Susan and James Walensky -- Waluski, who nominated Mr. Trezak -- Trezziak for this award, and also West Assistant Principal Lauren Kolsiak. Kolsiki. James, would you share a few words on what makes Mr. Trezziak such a valued educator in our district?
Well, I think first off, you had a lot of Polish names in there. You know, you call him Mark, you call him Trezziak. We call him Mr. T. Okay? So that's how he's known around West. And I have two children at West right now, George in eighth grade and Francis in seventh grade, and they both had the pleasure to have Mr. T. as their teacher for STEM and for robotics. And George has had Mr. T. I think his very first semester at West when he was a sixth grader. And George has an IEP, and he learns differently. And Mr. T. is just has this amazing ability to understand that. He's looks at all students, not as learning the same way, but everyone's an individual. And he's just had this ability to reach out to our son, to, like we like to say in our household, meet him where he's at. And to us, Mr. T. has, you know, done a great job at that. When George needed a friend, or a kind word, or some little more strong encouragement, Mr. T. was there. And he just know the right amount of all of that to put together to motivate him, and, you know, my daughter as well, on their projects. And, you know, George would come home at the end of the semester with his project for the quarter or the semester, and they made multiple ones, but he always had his beaming smiling on his face, like he was absolutely so proud of what he did. And was maybe painted the greatest, maybe didn't work the best, but it is the most beautiful work of art for us in our household. And to have Mr. T. see that in a student, and to just adjust as he needed to, is why we nominated him, so.
I would echo those same comments about my son and what he's done for him at West. But we'd also like to invite up Mrs. Kolsiki to please share a few words on what makes Mr. Trezziak such an important part of your team at West.
Yes, and I thought I was also coming up to talk to Mr. T.
He can talk if he'd like to.
So happy to be here to talk about Mr. T. And yeah, just all the things that you said were right on. So Mark Trezziak is a vital team member of the West staff. Mark goes above and beyond in the classroom and is a great support to the administrators and teachers at West. Mark is the kind of guy who helps me at recess and lunch duty. Anytime I ask, he always steps up. In the emails, he's always like, "I got you, Lauren. I got you. Don't worry, we'll be fine." He's so positive and willing to help me. He's invested in the success of all of his students, whether celebrating their creation or maybe challenging them to go even further with a specific design or project. When I walk into his classroom, there's always so much energy and excitement as students use equipment and do true hands-on learning. Mark does a great job of providing a safe and inspiring learning environment. We are so thankful to have a teacher like Mark at West Middle School. And truly, anyone who can teach sixth graders how to use a saw deserves an award. So congratulations, Mark.
Congratulations, Mark, for this recognition for all your efforts to help West students prepare, I'm sorry, learn, prepare, and thrive. On behalf of the PCS -- PCCS Board of Education, I'd like to present Mark Trezziak with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra-Miler Award.
Thank you very much.
And we'd like you to step around and thank the rest of the board members.
Mark, we're going to do some photos.
While they're doing a photo, we'll go ahead with our board committee reports. Darn, Patrick's not here. But I wanted to remind all board members, and I'll probably remind Patrick when he gets back, to please use your microphones, especially like if you're turning your head, you might have to move it closer, but we need to make sure that what we're saying is picked up on the recording. So first is the president's report, and that's me. So I just wanted to mention a couple events that I went to since our last board meeting and thank some of the other board members who went also. The first was the Suicide Prevention Parent Forum, and I want to thank the administration also for arranging to have that. It was really informative. And I wanted to thank Member Kehoe, Member Sidhu, and Member Brooks for also attending. I don't remember if anybody else was there. I don't think so. I also wanted to mention the SME Prime Kickoff Event that was held at Starkweather. It was just amazing to learn about the program and the different companies that are investing in our students. So it was really exciting, and I wanted to thank Member Kehoe and Member Savage for coming to that also. And finally, I did attend Coffee with Monica. I'll let Monica talk about it, but I was pleased to be there. So, thank you. Next is the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, Member Sidhu.
Thank you. Can I just quick mention that Member Lazzarowitz and I, and I want to say, I saw Jennifer Kehoe. I don't know if Member Kehoe was there. We did attend the SG 5K, and it was a fabulous event, as always, so.
It was a great time.
It was awesome. So thank you again for the kids that put it together and for everyone that showed up. So for the SPA, the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, we met last week Wednesday, and we went through the technology integration plan and the K-12 environment. So you're actually going to get a preview of that. There's some exciting work happening with the instructional technology team here, along with curriculum and assessment, so you're going to get a chance to look at what they're doing. We also looked at the plan to create Makerspaces in the elementary classroom, and again, that's another exciting project. So if you know anything about Makerspaces, it's all about engaging kids through a hands-on learning environment. So again, a really nice, exciting project that the elementary levels are engaging in. We also looked at the overview of the Elementary Word Study Program that will be coming forward with some financials attached to it, and then the out-of-country field trips that were just approved to Spain, France, and Greece. And that's it. Our next meeting is June 5th, Wednesday, at 4:30 PM, right here in this room. If you can join us, we would love to have you. Thanks.
Thank you. And next is the Policy Committee with Member McCoyn.
We met before the last meeting, so we do not have a meeting until May 28th, which may be changed. But we meet in the superintendent's conference room, which is right when you come in, on the first floor. It's very exciting. Everybody is welcome. And I just wanted to note that with some of the policies that we've passed recently or on our agenda, so one is student suicide, and if you read it, you might think it seems kind of thin, but the policy just tells us what we're going to do, and the administrative guidelines that go along with it have more of the resources and all of those other things. And all of that information will eventually be available on our website.
Thank you. Next is Finance and Operations, and Member Kehoe. I am reminding everyone tonight to use their microphones, and especially like if you turn your head to talk to another board member.
I think that was a hint towards me. So we've not had a Finance and Operations meeting since our last board meeting. We have the next one coming up on Thursday, May 23rd. That's next week, and it will be an exciting meeting where we get to talk about the draft budget that we're preparing. So we welcome people to participate. It's probably not as cool as what happens in the Student Performance and Achievement, but, you know, it is pretty exciting and helps prepare us for the next school year. So we welcome people to come and join us next Thursday, 4:30 PM, here in this room.
Okay. Last committee report is the Educational Excellence Foundation Report, and we have, from the Board of the EEF, Angela Nolan tonight.
Hello, members. Hello, administrators. Hello, staff.
Hello.
I'm Angela Nolan.
Hi, it's you.
You as well. So I'm Angela Nolan, EEF. I'm also a district employee and a parent of a high school, two high schoolers, one graduating, one freshman. And thank you for allowing the EEF to be here tonight. May is the month that is devoted to scholarship season. Thanks to the generosity of our community, we're able to award anywhere between 20,000 and 25,000 worth of scholarships to graduating seniors. Many of these scholarships were set up by individual donors. Some are in honor or memory of a PCCS community member. Some were established by PTO groups and have varying criteria. For example, the ISPISTER Scholarship was established for a student who attended ISPISTER. Applicants are asked to share a positive memory they have of their time at ISPISTER and how it impacted them. The Carl's Cabin Scholarship was established for students who are going into the culinary arts field. Applicants are asked to submit an original recipe with their application, and if they're selected to receive the award, they help plan, prepare, and serve at a special fundraising dinner for the scholarship. Then we have a couple scholarships for students going to the teaching field. One in particular, the Joan Strout Scholarship, asks applicants why they're pursuing teaching, and to honor Joan's sense of humor, they have to submit a joke with their application. Finally, we're proud this year to work with the family of Joan Kalish, former Spanish teacher at the park, and to fund a scholarship for a student that was impacted by Joan's teaching. It was a very touching tribute to her and her dedication to the students throughout PCCS. Many of the applications can be found on our website, on our website, Mr. Brandon? Eefforkids.org. We also have the privilege of awarding these to students at the honors convocation nights at the park and at Starkweather graduation. I myself have thoroughly enjoyed presenting some of them myself for the past few years to amazing graduates. The EEF is excited to be able to help our talented graduates as they move on to the next and very expensive chapter of their lives, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Now we are at Citizens Comments, which I imagine is why a lot of you are here. We do have quite a few tonight, 19 or 20, so I would really like to stick to the three minutes that everyone gets, so please respect the time of everyone here and stick to your three minutes. As usual, Mr. Brandon will be putting the timer up. Oh, he's already got it up. So first up is Scott Ragland.
Good evening. I'm Scott Ragland. I have three children, one of whom is a senior at Salem High School. The other two graduated in '08 and 2010, also from Salem. We moved to this community 23 years ago with one criteria. We wanted to find a good school district for our kids. And based on the reputation of Plymouth-Canton, we made, I think, the best decision that we could have made as parents. It's been a great experience, and I would say the teachers in the district are largely the architects of that reputation, and there just happen to be a few of them here. So I say, as the father of a first-grade teacher, I deeply respect all of you and appreciate everything that you do, everything that you do. Also worth noting is that all three of our kids participated in the middle school and high school band programs. They were in the curricular as well as the extracurricular programs, including the marching band. I know there are a lot of program offerings at the park, and that's a great thing, but their experiences in the band program was quite astonishing to both their mother and I. Their personal growth, as well as the impact that it had on them to achieve greater results in their other classes, was, quite frankly, shocking, if I'm being honest. Not many programs represent the district on a national stage. I know there are a few, but not many. And the band program does that and does that with honor. And it's not just the national recognition that I care about. It goes back to what this program does for the students, what it does for them to prepare them for their next step. So important, in my view, are these programs that I urge the board and the administration to expand their support. Programs of this size and caliber warrant additional support in the form of added personnel in the high school band office. This investment will open the door for more students to seize the opportunity, should they choose to do so, and be a part of a program that, for many of them, might just be a game changer that they need. My wife and I have been blessed to have been heavily involved in this program right from the beginning, back in 2004, when our oldest was in the program, so we're a little biased when it comes to band. But I wouldn't be here if I did not fully support the program, if I did not fully support the directors, if I did not fully support the boosters, and all of the hard work that all of them put into this program. So I urge your continued support, and I thank you for listening. Thank you.
Next is Eliza Merkel.
In the interest of time, I'm going to, I will email while you just.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next is Erica Garbats. Did I say her? Yeah, I know you have, okay. Well, you had it written out for me.
I've learned. Good evening. My name is Erica Garbats, and I have two boys at Liberty Middle School, formerly Bentley, formerly Kiddeby Campus, and formerly Stay and Play. So we've been a committed family to PCCS for over 12 years. Tonight, I'm here to ask each of you one question, and that is, will you be the one? Will you be the one that supports our teachers in the same way that they support our students, like Brian Boyd, who has made a lifelong impact on my oldest son? Mr. Boyd has pushed Bryce academically. He has made him more responsible, more committed, and more focused, not only inside the classroom, but at home as a brother and as a son. He has challenged and supported him in the classroom as a teacher and on the cross-country course and the basketball court as a coach. Mr. Boyd has taught Bryce, through his actions, to not only be a young man of character and integrity, but to be proud of those characteristics. And that's not easy with a 14-year-old who knows everything. Will you be the one? Will you be the one that supports our teachers like Mrs. Boyd? Inside the classroom, she expects students to give their best effort. Excuses are not okay, and taking responsibility is the expectation. She supports our students by raising three, soon to be four, of her own PCCS children, while her husband spends countless hours with students outside the classroom as a mentor and coach. Together, the Boyd's have taught and given my two boys life lessons that will help them succeed, not only in school as they move forward, but also in their life. And they have taught my boys to be responsible and productive members of our PCCS community. Will you be the one? Will you be the one to show Mr. and Mrs. Boyd and the rest of the teachers in our district that making a lifelong impact on our students will not go unnoticed, but will be rewarded and supported? Will you be the one? Will you be the one to step up and support our teachers like Mr. Munch stepped up to help our eighth-grade math students at Liberty get caught up after two years of less-than-consistent teaching in the math department? Nightly tears and drastic loss in confidence in math has turned into a determination and an effort to succeed in my son. Will you be the one? Will you be the one to support our teachers with the same passion and energy that Mr. Ballard brings to ELA every day? A teacher whose passion and energy for reading has opened both of my boys up to the idea that reading maybe can be fun, you just have to find the right book. So will you be the one? Will you be the one that supports our teachers? Because supportive teachers equal successful students.
Next is Angie, and I'm sorry, Angie, I can't read your handwriting.
Pesney.
Pesney, okay.
This is my daughter. She's a second grader at Bentley. Last year, my daughter suffered due to a failure by the school in getting her appropriate services to address her special needs. She went from a happy child to a child who did not want to go to school. She had bad dreams, stomach aches, she cried every morning, and she was disruptive in class. She began having behavioral issues that escalated, and my second grader was suspended nine times. I could not get the services I needed for her. I had to fight every meeting with her principal, and I was very discouraged. The IEP process was frustrating, and it felt like a secretive process where the principal was holding the information, not wanting me to have my rights known or the services known for my child. This is my story, but please know, I speak for parents from Bentley and other parents in this district who are experiencing the same thing. I have detailed some of the failures last year. I walked in the door of Bentley with assessments and diagnoses by a psychologist. The first principal discouraged me from having my child evaluated for special ed. services and delayed her process. The next principal restrained my daughter twice, kept her confined in a room in her office. When her behavior escalated, called family members to pick her up from school repeatedly rather than seeking out support from her team, from a behavioral specialist. These strategies were counterproductive. A functional behavioral assessment was not offered, nor did I know about this until I learned it from my advocate. The principal refused to grant my daughter a paraprofessional, even at the request of her team. At the later part of the year, after much fighting, my daughter was finally given a para inappropriate services. Within a short period of time, she greatly improved. She won the Turnaround Student Award, and she is thriving this year. I have relayed my concerns to Ms. Merritt, who is kind enough to get me in touch with Ms. Woodhams. We had a very positive conversation about perhaps having parent liaisons at school to help express the needs of these children with special needs. I, I hope that this happens. I would love to see this happen. We have an opening for a new principal at Bentley. I have asked Ms. Woodhams to please be present at the interview so that we get someone in this position who has a background in education, especially special needs children. And I would suggest that this be done for any principal in this district. I ask that this candidate be chosen to have extensive knowledge in the IEP process and that this is shared with parents. I also ask that our paras and staff are properly trained and receiving appropriate pay so we don't lose them to Ann Arbor Public Schools, that our teachers are getting the help they need in the classroom, providing paras, and making sure each child has their 504 or IEP if they have special needs, that teachers are paid appropriately so we don't lose these teachers, that our building be staffed with appropriate number of counselors. As we talked about suicide prevention, I was very discouraged to find out that the request for additional counselors at the high school did not make the budget. I ask you revisit this. Finally, I printed a letter from my cousin who left our district in 2016 due to a failure to meet her children's special needs. I ask you, please read it. She details her successes she has found at Saline Public Schools, which is a district we could partner with. Thank you for your time. I have the letter, I have the things that I've talked about, and I also have an article on the difficulties that parents suffer when they have children with special needs and they are not getting their services met. Thank you.
If you, if you would like to pass that out to us, that would be fine. Next is Kendall Johnstone. Next is Kendall Johnstone.
Hi, I'm Kendall, and apparently I really need to buy a red shirt. I graduated from Salem in 2017, and I'm currently working on my bachelor's in teaching mathematics at Eastern. Throughout my time in PCCS, I was so lucky to have wonderful educators who impacted me, especially the math teachers at the park. Today, I'd like to share two experiences that have really stuck with me. So, number one, my first semester, senior year, I was taking pre-calc. Pre-calc wasn't going very well, to say the least. When it came time for finals, I was not sure if I was going to pass the class, which was something I expressed to my teacher many times. I left my final just as nervous as I went into it and immediately logged into MyStar when I got home, just to see that pre-calc had been removed from my viewable classes. I did my best to come to terms with the fact I was not going to know my grade until the following morning, when it was posted outside the classroom. An hour later, as I was logging into MyStar for the 100th time that afternoon, hoping that I would find my grade, the phone rang. When I picked it up, it was none other than my pre-calc teacher, Mrs. Robinson, who took the time out of her day to call me and let me know that I passed my final and therefore passed the class. "Ms. Robinson, I don't know if you're here tonight, and I don't know if I ever thanked you for that. Thank you for doing that. That, I appreciate it so much. I got the best sleep of my life that semester that night." And that's the first thing I think of when I think of a teacher going above and beyond for their students. So, here's number two. My second semester freshman year in Algebra I Support with Ms. McClellan. I could have easily spent my three minutes sharing the impact that Ms. McClellan alone has made in my life, but I'll keep it at this one. We were creating our note cards for our algebra finals, and I happened to have some extra space on mine, so I asked Ms. M. if she would write something nice on my note card. She did some, she did something along the lines of, "You got this. You'll do great." I went on to get an A on my final. I'd never gotten an A on any final, let alone math, but having what I would eventually come to call kind words of encouragement on my note card helped me to calm down and regroup when I was getting nervous while I was taking the test. I've had 14 math finals since then, and Ms. McClellan has given me kind words of encouragement for every single one of them, whether it be on my physical note card or in response to a frantic email sent the night before my exam. These two things are so small in the grand scheme of life, but have left a lasting impact on me. Supported teachers equal successful students. Successful students who may choose to become educators like myself one day. If we do not begin to support our teachers, we will continue to deter students from this field. I can't count how many times I've been told not to do this and that it isn't worth it. If I can make the impact in just one student that any of these adults made in me, then that's worth it right there. We need to support our current teachers, especially if we want to support our future teachers. Thank you so much for letting me share my experiences.
Next, we have Poojita Cassiparam. Sorry if I didn't say it right.
Hi. Hi, my name is Poojita Cassiparam, and I am a Canton High School graduate of 2014 and a Michigan State Supply Chain grad of 2018. Although many of my teachers are not in this room, I still want to talk about the influence they had on me. When I was struggling in school, a lot of my teachers were open to me coming after school, asking questions, and sometimes giving me great study tips to improve my grades. I was always a studyaholic, and my teachers went above and beyond to give me extra assistance when I needed them. The hands-on approach taken by many teachers are quite important in high school, and implementing methods of classroom teaching were applicable have been proven successful. For example, senior year in my pre-calc class, I was bummed that I wasn't given notes or packet outlines that I had to write every, excuse me. I was bummed I didn't have, like, packet guidelines to write all these notes down, so I had to write everything by hand. But that introduced me to the note-taking skills for college. Like that, many teachers spend time and make commitment, like driving an hour commute, to make sure students are achieving a quality education. So with that being said, I advocate the board giving back to many Plymouth Canton Community School teachers, who have influenced students myself, to go and continue further education and receiving a college degree. Thank you.
Next is Natalie Rogers.
My name is Natalie Rogers, and I graduated from Plymouth High School in 2016 and just graduated from Michigan State University last weekend. It's so exciting to see in this room so many people who have made an impact on me from elementary school to high school, and to see so many faces who I know have had an impact on my peers, even if I didn't have them personally. So there's no other profession in the world that exists where there's so much potential to make an impact on the world than teachers. They impact every single person who has gone on and made a change in the world. And PCCS teachers are the best example of that. So, I want to give a little story. So, throughout my time in school, I had, I had a lot of teachers who were amazing and who I really loved, but I never really felt like I had a path or had a purpose. And I felt that way my first day of my junior year. And then, I walked into Ms. Bennett's economic class, and by the end of that week, I knew what I wanted to do, and I knew what made me feel alive, just because of the way that she was teaching the class and the way that I could see she cared about what she was teaching. From then on, I went to take all of her classes and even take her independent study, and then I was the president of the Real Reps, which is the club that she is the chair of. And she went on to support me as we went on and created a scholarship for girls that's now in its fourth year of existing, and she's inspired me to do amazing things with my education and made me feel like I had a path and a purpose. And I know that she's not the only teacher who did that. I've had amazing teachers like Mr. Thomas, Mr. Carroll, Ms. Kraft, everybody who's ever impacted my life. And I urge you to support the teachers like they have supported us and they will continue to support us. Thank you.
Next is Dorian Thompson.
I have to start off with a little joke. I know some chills went into some of these teachers' minds when they heard my name get called, because there's some funny stories that we have from back in the good old days. Hello, Superintendent Merritt. You look younger and younger every time I see, I'm telling you. All right, but, so I'm going to start the speech. Superintendent Merritt, members of the board, distinguished guests, and our rock star teachers. I rise today to stand firm with the great teachers of Plymouth Canton Community School districts, and I want to tell you why I think our educators mean so much to our community. I'm going to start off with this quote. "America is like a shining city on a hill. But if you don't have a good teacher, teacher to teach our kids how to read the directions to get there, the history of our country, how our government works, how to calculate their future, future mortgage rates, how to be active, or even spell out the word opportunity, they are out of luck and we have failed them as members of our society." I urge this board to get a deal done, and I urge them to get a deal done now. These educators deserve to work without the worry of having their insurance skyrocket or the cost of living increases, because the board has not given them the appropriate steps that they have earned and that they have deserved. From staying after school to offer free extra help to their students, being advisors to a club so that they can give a student who may not fit in at such a big school the opportunity to find their place, and even those teachers who provide crucial support to those who might not be lucky enough to have it at home, these teachers are going above and beyond for the next generations, for the next generation of Americans. I always say that a teacher is serving their community. And the fact of the matter is, teachers that are surviving on one income, if they are a first-year student, they cannot afford to live in the community which they serve, and that is sad. In my 21 years, and I feel old saying 21 now. I graduated three years ago. I'm in that C right there. I have, I'm in that C, 2013. In my 21 years, I have been invited to the White House three times by a member of the First Family. I've met multiple presidents. I've gathered connections with some of the most powerful people in the nation. I've secured opportunities that many will never come across. I don't credit that to people in suits from Lansing and Washington, DC. I credit this to Jennifer Bennett, who taught me how to excel in understanding of government; David Sutherland, who taught me how to excel in law; Lauren Cummings, who taught me how to excel in speech; Scott Thomas, who taught me how to excel in debating and communicating; Bridget Hauser, who would push me in third grade to pronounce that word correctly, where I would sit in timeout because I didn't want to try it; Laurie, Laurie Langendorfer and Amy Van Ulen, who knew I cheated on that homework and that test, but gave me a zero for a lesson that I need to do it myself. And there's countless of others, teachers. And even the teachers that I didn't have, who I knew anyway, I can name a few, like Ms. Terry over there, and where else? There's a couple. I can't get into all that. I have learned, I have, that's going to go off, I'm going to hear it, hold on. I'm going to, this is my last sentence. I have learned, I have prepared, I have thrived, because of these, these amazing individuals behind me, and I know many others have done it as well, and to point out-
Dorian, can you finish up?
I'm sorry. Oh. And I hope, you know, I hope this board will recognize it and understand it. Thank you, and God bless our great teachers of Plymouth Canton Community School.
Next is Ethan Petzold.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ethan Petzold. I was a graduate of Salem High School in 2016, and I just wanted to come before the board today to talk about how teachers have changed the course of my life. When I was growing up, I had learning disabilities that made it difficult for me to graduate high school, let alone go to college. But because I had caring teachers who went above and beyond to make sure that I could succeed, I was able to have so many opportunities throughout life. And that's not how my story ended with, you know, not being able to graduate high school. I was able to excel in school. In high school, I took AP classes, honors classes, and I was able to end up going to college. And I think that it's really because we have incredible teachers. And so I just wanted to talk about that today. I just wanted to thank our teachers and just ask that the board remembers that supported teachers equals successful students. Thank you.
Next is Sharon Lang.
I'm going to throw up. All right. Hi there. My name is Sharon Lang, and I am a math teacher at Plymouth High School. I was hired into Plymouth Canton in 2006. I had seven years of experience at an esteemed all-girl Catholic school when I came into the district. Despite this, I was offered a contract at Step One, and I was told that everyone gets hired at Step One. As the years have gone by, however, it's been a little more than disheartening that there have been other teachers hired and given at least a few steps, and I just wonder why they were given that gift and I wasn't. But I digress. In February of 2016, I was diagnosed with breast cancer. My oncologist told me that I would want to take the rest of the year off. I would need to undergo strong chemotherapy and then have surgery and also radiation. I remember thinking about my students and wondering if whatever substitute they were given would be adequate to teach them what they needed. I was so very scared, but I was more concerned with my students and their well-being than I was of my own. In case you are curious, the only days that I took off that year were the days that I received my chemotherapy infusions. I was there every single day, and I continued after-school study sessions for my students on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I remained dedicated to my students and their parents and to PCCS, thanklessly. I need you to understand that these are the type of teachers that you're hurting with step freezes and no cost of living increase. I'm a teacher that thinks more of her students than of herself. I'm a teacher that's willing to fight through fatigue and pain for the advancement of her students. I'm one of many teachers at PCCS that quietly goes above and beyond and yet is not compensated when contract negotiations are underway. I continue to offer these study sessions to my students, and FYI, I have students every time, because I care about them, but I'm beginning to wonder who cares about me. After these study sessions, I go to the Plymouth Library and tutor students that are not my own for pay, because I can't survive on the salary that I have. Yes, I have to work an additional six or more hours a week tutoring and then go home and check papers, adjust lesson plans, and agonize about struggling students. My teaching consumes my life. I also play with Dearborn Symphony, which I love, but I count on those checks to help pay bills, too. I'm getting married in June, and I can't spend time with my fiancee like I want to, because I'm running so ragged. I can't tell you monetarily how much I've lost over the years, because quite honestly, I don't have time to compute it. But I can tell you this. We were recently given the information that our insurance is increasing by 400%. How am I supposed to deal with that? And here's the real kicker. I've always wanted to be a mom. Well, the chemotherapy I was on ruined my ovaries. And if Joe and I want to be parents, we have to undergo IVF, which isn't covered by any of our insurance plans. How am I supposed to afford this when I'm making more than $10,000 less this year than I expected to make when I originally signed my contract? That money is the difference between me potentially being a mom or not, and it's just not fair. I just need you to understand how your decisions are impacting those of us who silently give and give and give and never ask for anything in return. Well, I'm, we are asking now. Because I can't continue living this way, we need your support. Please remember that supported teachers equals successful students.
Next is Jamie Wells.
Tough to follow that one. Okay. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to tell my story. My name is Jamie Wells, and I'm currently a math teacher at Liberty Middle School. I could start my story with all the data and the facts. Being a math teacher, I could tell you my wages and how affected me over the years and how I've suffered. But my colleagues before me and after me will have, will paint such a picture. But I wanted to paint you a different picture. Dad is great, but you don't see our second backpacks. I started my career at 18-years-old in PCCS, working as an assistant in the extended-day program, going to school, paying for classes, and slowly making my way to graduation. I did my student teaching in Allen, and I began interviewing. I knew I wanted to stay in PCCS, so I applied everywhere. See, those were the days where the year, where there was no jobs and plenty of applicants. But I did my time, three long terms, and still needed, told I needed more experience. I kept my head down and worked harder. I knew where I wanted to be. Finally, I succeeded in a long-term math position at Discovery, then I was hired into. All the hard work was paying off, but little did I know, I was about to enter five years of layoffs, from new buildings to new grades to new curriculums. I held on. Pay freezes, furlough days, more out of my pocket and less coming in, but I held on. I worked harder. Summer school, clubs that paid stipends, summer jobs, tutoring, coaching. It was exhausting, but I kept my head afloat, and this is what I had to do. Then my world changed 19 months ago, and my mom passed away unexpectedly. She was 62 and a public educator and was two years from retiring. I examined her life and mind and saw the same theme come through from hard work and exhaustion. As we grow up, we're advised by our parents to do: house, car, family, retirement. As you see, my mom was two years from retirement, and all that hard work she did, never got to enjoy it. So in this life, what do I want? I often danced this thin line of savings and living. I needed to make changes, so I did. I have, I rented out a spare room in my house to a friend, so I could quit one job or two. Started thinking smarter, not harder. Looked for ways I could make money without bringing, burning out. I started to enjoy the small things, like family and friends. But as I look what's coming down the pipe, I'm already exhausted. I almost cried to think I may have to start working three jobs again. So I stand in front of you and I will, and I ask, will you be the ones that will give me the contract and my colleagues that we deserve? Will you be the ones that will put my mind at ease and let me live my retirement a little more, just kind of unlike my mom, who never got that opportunity? So supported, supported teachers equal successful students.
Next is Carolyn Coffey.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Coffey, and I've been teaching for nine years at Salem High School. I hold a teaching certificate in political science and US history and a master's degree in special education for learning disabilities. In the early 2000s, I changed my career from social work to teaching, believing that this profession would both satisfy my desire to have meaningful work, as well as support myself and my two young boys. So I took out the dreaded financial aid loans to earn my certificate and- So I took out the dreaded financial aid loans to earn my certificate and masters, juggled school, work, and single parenthood, and finally was hired by Plymouth Canton in 2010. I signed a contract where in 10 years I would be at the top of the pay scale, making $79,473. But shortly after my first year, we were asked to make considerable concessions and sacrifices to help rectify the recession that plagued our state. Since then, our economy has grown, our unemployment rates have fallen. Teachers, however, have not reaped the benefits. We continue to see our wages stagnate while health and living expenses continue to rise. My current salary is $6,830 less than would have been based on my original contract. In order to maintain financial survival in this field, I have been working a second job as a receptionist at a real estate office. Two years ago, I picked up a tutoring job on Saturdays. On average, I work an additional 15 to 18 hours a week, on top of the extra time I spend outside the school day, working on lesson plans, grading papers, and IEPs. No longer do I have time to offer after-school help for my students or stay after-school to create elaborate lesson plans. Any interest of running a club or attending student activities is nearly impossible on my rigorous schedule that I have to keep in order to survive. I know I'm not alone when I say I am tired. Teaching is a profession that gives you an opportunity to coach and nurture a student's life journey. It's a profession that promotes empathy and compassion. I get to work with a community of professionals that share similar values around advocating and supporting our most vulnerable student population. To complete these aims, a teacher must have an unwavering drive and ample time to fulfill its commitments. It's a career that demands intellectual curiosity, wisdom, flexibility of mind, clever persuasion, and love. It's a calling that keeps you up at night crafting a lesson plan that will inspire the most stubborn student with opportunities to celebrate a student's success in real time. But over the past several years, it's been a profession that has been brutally disrespected and villainized, and shamed with an evaluation system that tries to aggregate our worth and our work through a narrow window of data collection. The profession that I love has become one that expects more for less, that demands excellence for bottom-of-the-barrel prices, and requires us every year to grovel for a living wage just so we as teachers can focus on teaching instead of hustling for supplemental income and side gigs to pay our bills and take care of our own families. I stand here with my fellow coworkers and professional family, asking, will you stand with us and award us the contract we deserve?
My name is Emily Zacta. I am not here today to share my story, but rather the story of my friend and colleague, Brian Creekey. Brian and I have worked together for nine years, in which I've watched him tirelessly support his young family. He can't be here to speak for himself tonight or any of the board meetings because he has a second job where he has to work every Tuesday night, and he asked me to share his story, which I'll start now. Hello. My name is Brian Creekey. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend this evening's meeting as I have a doubleheader baseball game to umpire. I am in my ninth year of teaching at Starkweather Academy. I have a wife and two amazing daughters, ages eight and five. My wife also has a career in education. She is a classroom assistant in an early childhood program in another school district. She has an associate degree, and I currently hold a bachelor's degree. Since I started teaching in the fall of 2010, I have had to work multiple jobs to provide for our family. As I mentioned before, I umpire baseball. This occurs from the end of March to the end of October every year. I also teach summer school. I work these extra jobs in order to ensure our ability to pay our bills and provide the necessities for our family. This also takes time away from being with my family. For much of the year, my wife is virtually an only parent while I see my children grow through pictures and Facebook posts. This adds much stress to our lives, which has resulted in compromised health conditions such as gained weight and high blood pressure. If we were to receive the compensation that has been reduced or denied to us over the past decade, that increased my quality of life and my family would be immeasurable. Will you be the ones who give my daughters more time with their father? Will you be the ones who gives my wife back her husband? Will you be the ones who give us the opportunity to return to our healthy lives? Thank you for your time, and remember that supported teachers equals successful students.
Next is Jamie Badger.
I'm Jamie Badger, and I'm a community member and a parent of four PCCS students, and I'm also proud to be an instructional coach in the English Learners Department. After moving to Michigan from Pennsylvania in 1999, I was pleased to land a job in the ELA Department of West Middle School in January of 2000. It was communicated to me that my experience as a high school English teacher for the previous four and a half years in Pennsylvania made me a strong candidate for the position. As you have heard time and time again from my fellow colleagues, my work experience was desired but would unfortunately not be compensated monetarily. That was a tough pill to swallow, but I was anxious to get back to the classroom because I truly loved teaching. I am one of the lucky people who have discovered their passion. That initial contract was prorated for starting at the second semester, and it totaled $17,490. Many have shared how switching school district often sets teachers back financially through the loss of their steps. I will tell you that switching states compounds those losses. I have held teaching certificates in three states and have taken seven state-required tests to obtain those certificates. I finished out that school year and the next, and after deciding to start a family, I took two years off for childcare leave, was denied a third year, and then made a decision to resign. I know that I am fortunate that I was able to make that decision, as I know that is a privilege and I don't take it lightly. Fast forward to February of 2017, when I decided to return to full-time teaching. I once again applied to PCCS and was hired back. I returned to a whole-new educational world driven by technology, newly researched best practices for teaching and learning, and an entirely different evaluation system for teachers. These were big changes for me. Change can be difficult, so it was comforting to see so many colleagues who were still teaching here while I had been gone, and lots of them are sitting right here. Unfortunately, compensation did not change during that long time span. This time, I was offered to start at Step 1.5, taking into small consideration my previous PCCS employment. This prorated contract totaled $17,965. How could my 2017 salary be within a few hundred dollars of my 2000 salary? $475, to be exact. This was and is absolutely shocking to me. It has and will, without a doubt, impact my financial future. But quite honestly, though, the people impacted the most are those colleagues I mentioned moments ago. Dedicated colleagues who spent the last 16 years educating the students of my community and educating my children despite the many financial setbacks caused by past contracts. Will you be the one to rewrite this narrative? Supported teachers equals successful students. Thanks for listening.
Next is Leslie Anderson.
Speaking of those dedicated teachers, I'm going to ask Kathy Myers of 33 years to come up here, and I'm going to yield my three minutes to Kathy.
After 33 years of dedicated service to my beloved profession, next month, I'm turning in my gradebook, and I want to tell you why. Please understand, I love teaching. I love the kids. If I could just be in my classroom and teach, I would stay another 10 years, but that is not what it is anymore. The constant demands, takebacks, and chipping away at reasonable trust and respect has taken its toll. I know that the evaluation process was put in place with all of the best intentions, but I can tell you, it has devolved into something that says to teachers, you are not trusted to do your jobs. We are expecting you to do hours and hours of extra work to prove to us that you are doing your job, and even then, you will never have any hope of being anything more than just effective. It is disrespectful, demeaning, and hurtful. There is no other profession that I am aware of that requires its members to set up their own evaluation, collect their own data, and then write their own final report. Here is mine. I came, I taught, I loved and respected them, they learned, and improved. I know that because they were able to complete the work I gave them and pass their assessments. We have a good relationship with each other, and they, too, are sad to see me go. Something has to change. Teachers have to feel respected again. We can't spend this kind of time collecting data and doing all of this planning. The fall is spent writing slows and collecting pre-test data, and the spring is spent keeping kids busy while we collect post-test data. It is hours and hours of work. It has to be changed and returned some of dignity to the staff you are evaluating that says we trust and respect you. This process also feeds into that public belief that teachers are the only thing that controls what happens with the learning of a child, like we are the be-all and the end-all. Well, we are not. In the old days when I started, right after the dinosaurs died off, our middle school counselors actually ran groups, spent time with students, worked with kids, spent time in classrooms, conducted lessons, did things that helped to intervene with problems. Now they do paperwork, cut up cards for tests, push papers, and make schedules. If you are going to do that, get a counselor parapro to handle that work. Let our counselors do what they are trained to do. The elementary schools need them, too. Think of how much better... Think of how much better our schools could be if you had someone to do that work. Last month, when we were told about the new mental health initiative for teachers, it made my decision for me. I was on the fence. This is truly beyond our level of expertise and what we have time to deal with. We are good, but just how good do you think we are? Each day for the last 15 years, I have kept my classroom open during lunch. It has begun to become the land of misfit lunchroom people. Kids who don't fit in, want to stay out of the fray, need a quiet place, whatever the reason. I try to work with them on social skills and give them the tools they need to get along, things that they should know. I ask them how their day is, what they are doing, what's going on in their lives. It's amazing how few of them know how to have a conversation, how to get along with people. Something they should be learning at home, or I'm answering questions about how to do simple things, like what to do when babysitting, or dealing with friends, or my favorite, picking up dog poop. Our plates are more than full. We work tremendous hours, and we do not get paid. Let's talk about pay. When I applied for retirement, they take your best three years. Mine were 2008, 2009, 2010, over 10 years ago. Yeah, really. The reason was because I was at the top of the pay scale then, and I was at the top for collecting a stipend for directing the school play for 26 years. I also had a stipend as department chair and one for planning the Washington D Street trip, an activity stipend that I only got for two years. How sad is that? My income has steadily gotten smaller and smaller and smaller. A raise was nonexistent for those of us at the top for 13 years, and then the first time we got one, I had to give part of it back. I realize most of you are new and do not know of all the times when we gave back raises, took pay cuts, stayed on steps, and did without for the benefit of the district. I cannot tell you how many times I have paid money out of my own pocket for my classroom. $25 does not cut it to set up my classroom. My concern is no longer for myself. I've already lost a house due to falling income, driven the same car for 13 years, and finally bought a new six-year-old car. Like so many of my colleagues, we are hurting. My biggest concern is for our youngest teachers. They are leaving and looking for better-paying jobs in droves. I know of several colleagues who are actively looking for different careers, not because they want to, but because they cannot afford to live on what is paid to them. They cannot afford to start families, buy houses, or drive decent transportation. I don't care. They cannot afford families, buy houses, or drive decent transportation. They are required to get further education, and that is expensive. Some are working two or three extra jobs in order to make ends meet. They love being teachers, but it is exhausting.
Can you wrap up?
Yeah. I know that you care just as much about us as we care about our students. Please fight for us. Stand up for us. Stand up with us. Make the changes that need to be made. Let Lansing know that the testing that we are doing is excessive and exhausting for our students and our teachers. It takes away from the business of teaching and learning and provides us very little in return. Help to change how schools are paid for. Don't let our best and brightest leave the profession because we can't afford to pay them a decent wage. You and I both know that this can be so much better. Plymouth Canton schools are a great place to learn and grow. I would not have stuck around for 33 years if I didn't think that. Now think of what it could be like if we all shared the same universal goals. Supported teachers equals successful students.
Thank you. Next is Charles Hamline.
Good evening, ladies and gents. I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Jennifer Bennett.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Bennett. I'm a teacher at Plymouth High School and have been employed in this district for 14 years. I was hired in just after the number of contract steps increased from 10 to 11 and have worked through the stretch to 14. This experience has included half-step contracts, freezes, increases in benefits costs, concessions of time, of wealth, and everything in between. In my 14 years, my insurance has become more expensive, my coverage has decreased significantly, my job requirements have multiplied, the bureaucracy has expanded, student expectations have been hijacked by cultural and societal demands, and the ability of teachers to find joy in their profession has disappeared. We are spread too thin, we are expected to be too many things, we are exhausted, the system has beat us down. When I started working in '05, the starting salary without a master's degree was $39,954. Today, that is still the case. As an economics teacher, I talk about what it means to say that wages are flat and how families are affected by this because of inflation. I use the starting salary as my first example in class. Taking inflation into account, in order for a starting teacher today to be able to afford what I could afford in '05, their salary would need to be $51,546. That's a difference of more than 11 grand. When I started teaching in '05, I was $11,000 richer than the first-year teachers I see in my hallways today, and that is horrifying. And let's not forget that when I hired in, my education costs less. The district covered all of my insurance, and the state contributed to a pension on my behalf as a reward for my contributions to our public education system in Michigan. Teachers today do not have those luxuries. To provide some perspective, when my daughter was born, 100% of my costs were covered. Today, if I were to have another child under our current plans, barring absolutely no complications during delivery, I would be left holding a bill of about eight grand plus my $2,900 deductible to guarantee coverage of 80% of that hospital delivery. That's nearly $11,000 out of pocket, again, without any complications. While we fully understand there are statutory rules from the Snyder era regarding the cap that districts can contribute to our health care, we ask our district to lobby the legislature for changes. While we understand it is not the district's fault, health care costs are rising, we ask the district to champion our cause in Lansing. Our district is a force to be reckoned with, and we ask for your help. I noticed this week that we posted a position for anticipated vacancies at the elementary level. That struck a chord. Anticipated vacancies? Why the anticipation? Is it because of retirements? Is it because of an increase in student population, even in the midst of the growing charter movement in our community? Or is it because we anticipate that people have finally had enough and that this latest blow to our health care costs could be the final straw? A 400% increase in our premiums coupled with an increase in our deductible? Who can afford that on our salaries? To keep my current plan, I will have to shoulder a $2,900 deductible before most of my insurance kicks in and be forced to pay an additional $200 each month to have that protection that my insurance is supposed to provide. Again, we recognize this is not your fault, but we are asking for your help. And we ask for your help because when you have asked for ours, we have given it. We have sacrificed, we have made concessions, and we take on more responsibility than any one human being should have to bear. We respond to nearly 1,500 questions each day. We are instructors, counselors, advisors... We are instructors, counselors, advisors, mentors, role models. We are inspiration, we are life coaches, we are chaperones. We tutor before and after school, we attend commencements, we report on the poor custodial efforts that are being performed in each of our buildings. We write letters of recommendation, we run clubs, we handle 504 and IEP accommodations, we present at honors nights, we present at curriculum nights, we meet with parents, we respond to an incessant amount of emails. We hold review sessions on our time to help our students earn college credit through a myriad of AP classes for which no instructional stipends are paid. We provide makeup opportunities for students who are absent bearing the burden of a district that lacks an effective attendance policy. We shoulder the daily impact of an apathetic, anti-intellectual society addicted to cellular technology that has created a generation of students that do not see the value in education. I stand before this board today because we fear that our words are not being heard. We fear that this has become nothing but a numbers game with the goal of a shrinking bottom line. Education is not a business. To claim that it can operate like one when there are no incentives for performing well or for teachers taking on ever more responsibility is absolutely absurd. Financial incentives are imperative. We can and must do better. Some is not enough, and our district's leaders can change that. I looked at the salary schedules of other districts. In Novi, teachers continue to receive compensation for additional years of service that are etched into longevity steps through 28 years. Novi rewards its teachers for a bachelor's, bachelor's plus 15, a master's, master's plus 15, and master's plus 30. If I was working in Novi today, I'd be earning more than $10,000 than I do now. In Livonia, Livonia rewards its employees with master's plus 15 and plus 30, but Livonia also provides financial benefit for ed specialist degrees as well as doctorates. And the longevity pay in Livonia, it's in the thousands. $1,936 at year 16, and once you hit year 26 in Livonia, $3,436 is your stipend. In our district, it's $1025. In...if I worked in Livonia, excuse me, I would be making more than $11,000 more than I do today, and that's without a PhD, which I would love to have. Dr. Bennett has a lovely ring to it, I'm not going to lie. But I don't have any monetary incentive to do that in Plymouth Canton, and that extra $11,000, that's without longevity stipends too. In Ann Arbor, the situation is the same. It's the same in Northville, the list is endless. But here's why I'm here, okay? I understand that the state legislator has made it impossible for us to position ourselves to take care of this profession, to encourage more to choose it. Session after session, we are attacked and scapegoated for the cultural ills that afflict our students, making it impossible for them to learn effectively. We are berated and belittled, insulted and taken for granted, and our district leaders have the power to change that. Our leaders have the ability to raise the bar and set the standard for the treatment of some of the most important people on the planet, because without teachers...I'm almost done, I swear. Without teachers, there are no doctors, no lawyers, no engineers. Without teachers, no mechanics, no electricians. Without teachers, there's no educational administrators. Without teachers, there's no teachers. I encourage our district to lead the charge in securing this profession. I encourage our district to lead the fight in Lansing to ensure that our students in Michigan are receiving an education the rest of the world would envy. We could be at the forefront. Let's lead the way. Supported teachers equals successful students.
Next is Julie Chevella. Is Julie here?
Sorry. Hi. And hi to my friends that came to read in my room this year. I'm Julie Chevella, and I work at Field Elementary, kindergarten teacher. I love my job, I love my students, I love my parents, I love my colleagues, I love my administrators, I love my school, I love my school district. Together we make a team, together we form lives, together we change lives, together we elevate children. Together we form a mighty oak tree. We are all connected to nurture and grow the students of PCCS. But eventually, even a strong oak tree will wither if it goes through too many droughts. It will allow the children to climb its wary branches, but those branches will soon break. The tree was never fed by the earth. The sun did not come out. The rain skipped over the oak. The soil became hard. The once great, virtuous oak tree supplied comfort, strength, and sustenance no longer stands tall. It is now broken, wary, weak, and tired. Find a way to give the mighty oak tree its strength again. We will continue to teach our hearts out, even when times are hard, even when salaries and steps are frozen. We do it for those smiles, we do it for those faces, we do it so they will have a tomorrow. Will there be enough of us tomorrow? Will those faces still smile? Those whose hearts plan to be teachers, where will they go? What will they do to fill their tomorrow? Supported teachers equals successful students.
Thank you all. Next up on our agenda is administrative reports and recommendations. First is the superintendent's report.
All right. I don't know if we need to pause as people leave or if they're staying, but I'll give them a pause if they're leaving.
We'd encourage you to stay.
We always encourage you to stay, but I want to give respect to those that are leaving.
Just so you know, I'm going to have time on my hands. And I tend to do everything I can to help, and I'll be doing, be willing to do everything I can to help this district with Lansing to get better, to fight, to do whatever it can. I...I'm in it to win it.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Kathy. And I appreciate Kathy's comments, and I want that message to be echoed because it does take a village, and we can't do it alone. And I want to thank this board because I think that as our profession has been attacked by our state and by our nation over years, I applaud the board for trying to work together, and I applaud our negotiations team by continuing to work together through the IBP process to try to say, how can we, first of all, stand behind certain things that are happening in Lansing right now to support the governor's budget? We took a resolution to support that budget, and that was big work, working at the table to say, how can we make things happen such that we can give fair compensation when possible to our staff because we believe it's important? So it does not go on deaf ears, and it's big work, and we have a lot of big work right now. My heart hurts as we talk about successful students. We have students in our district that are not successful, students that are coming to schools with stuff in their backpack, as you're talking about, students that are coming to school with special needs, with EL services, students that look like me, don't always have that same level of success. So we have a lot of big work to do, and we put a lot on your plates to do it, and we are working hard together to make sure that we compensate you fairly and keep you here in our district. We do value you. But just know that it is a team effort, and we need you in Lansing, not just the seven people around the table as a board, not just the administrative team. Hold on, Kathy. Thank you, appreciate that. When we look at our governor right now, when I say this board took action as a resolution in support of the governor's budget, this is a historic time where our governor is saying, "Look at the school finance research collaborative, the work that's saying, what does it cost to adequately fund a student in the state of Michigan?" That costs is almost $2,000 more than we are receiving. So we talk about what Novi is able to do, we talk about what Livonia is able to do. We applaud what we are able to do with less than $2,000 per student that the state says is required to adequately educate our students. So the work is there, our governor is looking at this and looking at a weighted formula to say, we need to get categorical support for students with special needs, for students with EL services, for students that are coming to school with a little bit more needs for support. We have to get behind that, and as we said before, as this board, we're open to any legislator that may come with a different proposal that has the same revenue stream, I would say, that could support the basic tenets of this school research, finance research collaborative. So I say that to say, it's big work. Our legislator right now is headed in the right direction, but there's a lot of work to come. We don't even know for this budget, probably until the fall, what the numbers will be, but we are still working together to make sure we can get to an agreement at the table that will compensate us fairly in the process, get the supports that we need so that all students can be successful in our district. It doesn't matter what...where you come from, what you look like, what your needs are, you should all have that opportunity for success in Plymouth Canton. So I appreciate everyone here this evening in terms of speaking your truth. Let's speak together, let's stand together, let's educate our community about school funding. We have a long way to go, but I am confident we can do it together. We're not fighting against each other, we are all on the same team. That's a team for Plymouth Canton students. Appreciate you, Kathy, for your comments. Thank you.
I'm here.
All right, we'll lean on you. All right. Thank you for your service. I want to also just celebrate, because we have to do that. At times, it feels so heavy when we talk about all the work that's going on, there's work that leads to rewards. Today, there was a wonderful celebration and a surprise at Erickson Elementary School. Our students, our little guys appreciated our principal, and their staff came together and wrote letters. Principal Kevin Lernett is a fan, diehard fan of the Detroit Tigers. The students wrote individual letters and had a surprise assembly for him today. They wrote letters, and the Paul's mascot came. Mr. Lernett has been granted the opportunity to throw out the first pitch for a game, I believe in June, and the staff and students surprised him. He walked into the assembly room today, and he was able to receive that ritual reward. That was an acknowledgement because Mr. Lernett and the staff, they're champions for students, and that's the work that we know goes on in each of our schools each day. I want to also recognize the work that our students are doing. I feel all...calm down. I want to celebrate the work that our students are doing. The art show is taking place. That's our K-12 art show this Saturday, 11:30 to 6:00 PM, Plymouth High School cafeteria. The time to come and celebrate our students and the work that they do with the support of our staff, our amazing staff, our entire village here at PCCS. Please make sure you show up to support the students there. Also, I just wanted to reference again Coffee with Monica and thank our community, our teachers, our staff that come out. Those are incredible opportunities to talk and hear how we can continue to get better. We do have areas that we need to improve, and so we need to have critical friends around our community to tell us those things, and we continue to work together in a mindset of continuous improvement to get better. So we appreciate that coffee. That will be it for this year. We'll come back again in the fall. So once again, just want to thank everybody for their comments this evening. I know we don't have that opportunity to respond to comments, but just say, let's stay positive, let's stay connected, let's take the fight to Lansing. It's important. We applaud everyone at this table and in the audience because we're working together to do what's right for kids and our staff here in PCCS.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is teaching and learning. Dr. Bender?
Thank you, President Berninski, and good evening, members of the board. The staff at Starkweather are committed to supporting the academic success and social emotional well-being of all of the students. Embedded in the program, our experiences for students to narrow their ideas for a career and develop the skills necessary to pursue the career and/or admission to the college of their choosing. Here to share the highlights of the Starkweather School Improvement Plan is Principal Mr. Kevin Lane.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me tonight, and really want to thank you for supporting the Starkweather program. We talk about the positive things that are going on in this district. We are really fortunate to have a supported program like Starkweather that supports the needs of students that have not been successful at the park. So I also want to thank those teachers, we have a couple representatives here tonight, and the rest of our support staff that did such an amazing job of supporting our students at Starkweather. You know, and years ago, a student asked me, would I want my child going to Starkweather? And their expectation, I think, was that, no, 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 I don't want my kid going to a school like this. And my answer, 100% honestly, was I would love for my students to go to a school like Starkweather. The only concern I would have is so many of our students have been through so much before they get to us, and I don't want...I would not want any child to have to go through what some of our students have been through on that path. Knowing that, because some of you have not been to Starkweather, and I have not had a chance to present to the board for a couple of years, this is actually my first time with glasses, and that Starkweather is a calm, caring environment. We are just a different and alternative path to success. It is not a disciplinary tool, it is not an easy way to get a diploma, it is really an alternative path to success. And it worked. So some of the highlights of this year, we worked with students, staff, and parents to create a new mission and belief statement. I'm not going to read you all of it, but the mission is life skills that last a lifetime. We took a lot of time this fall, talking with staff, talking with parents in person and through surveys, and talking with students, and gathering ideas. Actually, two out of our three belief statements and our mission statement were not created by staff initially, they were from either a student or a parent. I'm not sure which one necessarily, but I know they were created by students and parents, not just staff up. Goals and objectives for our program, and these are pretty standard. As we look at our data, we do need to improve in all our academic areas. We want to thrive in a culturally diverse society, to be college career-ready. That's really the key at Starkweather, and throughout the district, I understand, but at Starkweather, it's really focused on college and career-ready, being ready for what's next, not just getting through high school. High school diploma is great, and of course, that is a goal for all of our students, but to make sure that they are...all of our students are college and career-ready when they do walk across that stage. Some strategies and activities across the content areas. Mental health support, I know Dr. Merritt had mentioned that before. That we are really trying to support our students' mental health, feeling good about themselves, the ability to overcome barriers. ACES, adverse childhood experiences, as a training, and how adverse childhood experiences affect students even in the infant stages, and it's been really interesting to learn. I'm part of the team that's been going to the training, and then we're going to train our teachers, once we get the training, on how that affects students in that really they are...some of our people in our society and our young people are somewhat hard-wired to not react in a way that we would want them to under stressful situations. They'll shut down or lash out without any knowledge that they're doing that, and they just need a chance to calm down and be resilient, and then we're going to teach them how to be resilient. And that's something that our counseling and social work staff has been able to do, and now our entire staff has been working, and next year, we're really going to focus on teaching our students to be resilient, to get through those paths. Of course, we're going to follow the PCCS curriculum and instruction strategies, a number of our teachers, including some that are sitting in this room. Kim Del Purpasto has been part of the district curriculum overview and adjustments and changes and realigning benchmarks. Career focus across the curriculum. We have a partnership with Michigan Works through Jobs for Michigan Graduates, as well as the PRIME Initiative that many of you were at the other day, and to infuse those career skills in every part of our curriculum, whether it's English, math, they can write about their careers, they can look at what their career is going to give them from a financial standpoint. Competency-based grading is the other thing, which is a model that the Michigan Department of Education has really been pushing lately, which is making sure that every student knows everything they need to do. It's the idea of, if you have somebody building an airplane, if they get 90% of that airplane built, you don't want to fly in that airplane. So all of our students, when they complete a course, they complete every part of that course. Flexing schedules to maximize credits. Of course, as we said, our students, their goal is they want to graduate, and we want them to be college career-ready. So sometimes if a schedule is not working for students, if they're taking six classes or even...we can take seven classes at Starkweather right now, and they're only doing well in three or four of them, we can condense their schedule, at least for the semester, to maximize and make sure that they complete some of their classes rather than try to pass seven classes and wind up failing everything. Building those successes a little bit at a time, and then eventually, there are mechanisms in our program where they can catch up on their credits and start going faster when they're ready. Earlier, I mentioned the mental health supports. We're creating a mental health team. We're about to have our first real formal meeting with our counselors, social workers. We have a few teachers who are being trained and administrators. As I mentioned, we're going to work on the ACES, resilience, self-regulation. We have a teacher who's kind of become an expert on self-regulation, which is just the ability to calm down, alleviate anxiety. He's done a lot of work, and I was at as well with him, on helping students work with their test anxiety that they come up with, and just any type of anxiety it helps with. And we've been looking at, where can we infuse mental health supports within the curriculum itself? Of course, psychology classes, but within the writing, within social studies, there's a lot of... There's a lot of different places and we're going to be really working to infuse it throughout the curriculum so every student isn't looking at, oh, this is one more thing we got to do. I'm having anxiety, so I got to go to this thing after school. We don't want it to be that, we don't want it to seem like a penalty. Mentioned before the PRIME initiative. This is, as we look at our career focus in our school. Last time I was up here, we talked a lot about our jobs for Michigan grads a couple of years ago with Michigan Works. This is a partnership, for those of you who weren't able to be at the kickoff, with seven industry partners. And we are infusing this again in a number of different courses. For example, we have a biology, our biology class during an evolution lesson, taught the evolution of a manufacturing product, evolution of how to build a toy. So to see how that process works, we're working on a field trip for next year with economics class and seeing a product from start to finish. And that'll include a visit to the facilities. Our partners are really anxious for us to get students out to the facilities. They're also opening it up to CTE students from the park or other students interested in the park. We're looking at, we're working with the partners on how to infuse the practical skills into different courses such as chemistry, math, measurement, and the processes that they go through, and infuse that into class. And of course, that is things we will share with the entire district. We have a senior seminar class that we've had for longer than I've been at Starkweather. And it's a career-focused class and a goal-setting class. And part of the career-focused section, we're going to have one of our sections that's going to be focused on earning industry certifications and precision measurement instruments. And then eventually, we'll have a second section, a follow-up with advanced measurement instruments, which will be actually trained by the employees of our partners. On the horizon, with the PRIME program, we're going to continue to align curriculum with our partners' needs. Again, that real life, that why of teaching and learning. Adapting some of our school facilities, they, the PRIME partners have agreed to donate hundreds of thousands of dollars in equipment. And we do have to do some facility modifications to do that, to install those things. And then also, there is funding within that partner donation to provide summer and after-school opportunities for our students throughout the district. Just some accolades in general from Starkweather. These have been pretty consistent over the years. 66% of our graduates enroll in post-secondary programs. That's been pretty consistent over the years. And those are just the ones that are in-state, obviously, those are the ones we can track. It's not the number of applications. These are students actually enrolled through the tracking systems. We also know we do have some that enroll out of state as well. Most of those are at the community college and some of the area vocational programs as well, such as MEAT. And we also have a few students every year that enroll at the university. Over 25% of our graduates each year, we usually graduate about 60 students. Over 25% of those earn some type of college scholarship. Most will support at least a year of community college. A number of those students will earn multiple scholarships. Some years, that numbers have been as high as 40%, just depending on how many students earn multiple scholarships and reach out to other areas in the community. 20% of our current Starkweather students enroll in post-secondary level courses each year. And a big part of that is our collaboration with Schoolcraft College. And Kim is here still, she runs that program on collaboration with the faculty at Schoolcraft. We have a new program this year, Graduation Alliance. No matter how much we give to students and how much we do and how much we support students, sometimes life gets in the way of school. Some students, school cannot be a top priority, even third, fourth, or fifth priority. They just can't get to school on a regular basis. Some of the reasons that happens is due to health barriers. Or a student who came and got an award from the board just a few weeks ago, he had to go to work full-time. He had to move out of his house for really legitimate reasons and now has to work full-time. He is in this program now. What Graduation Alliance is, is it's an online, 100% online program with Michigan Department of Education-approved courses. Students are still Plymouth Canton Community School students. The counseling staff, teacher consultants, and myself monitor the students and their progress through monthly reports, and we have an online dashboard where we can see them. And it provides a lot of extra supports beyond the traditional in-school online programs that we have. Graduation Alliance provides live mentoring and testing at the local library. So they have to come, they do have to take their final exam in person so we know they're taking the final exam and they've been doing the course. So they take that at the local library, there's multiple meetings each week that they can come to, they can choose from. Some of our students that have moved out of the area will actually meet with students that are generally from another school. We have a young lady that moved down to Southgate and she didn't want to enroll in a new school. She loves our program, wants to stay connected to our program. So she is actually meeting in Wyandotte, that's where her closest meeting is. They have an online, highly qualified teacher for each course, 24/7 online tutor support. It's flexibility but with deadlines. That's actually a quote from the young lady from Dearborn that came in. She, we still do the Michigan Merit Exam testing with our students and they came in. And she came in and I asked her how she liked it, and she said, it's great, you know, they can be flexible with my life, what I need to do in my life, but there's still deadlines that keep me on track and keep me going towards graduation. We currently have about 85 students in this program. About half of those students are students that went directly from Starkweather because of different needs or barriers that they weren't able to overcome at Starkweather and went directly into the program. About half, the other half of the students are students that dropped out of, mostly from Plymouth Canton schools but other area districts as well, many years ago. And they're 20, 21 years old, and they just don't want to get into a classroom with a bunch of high school students, and most of them are working full-time as well and either supporting their family or supporting themselves. And that's all I have for this evening. And I do want, before I end and ask for questions, just want to remind you and our graduation is Thursday, I believe it's June 13th. I didn't look at the calendar before, the last Thursday of the school year. And at Salem High School, and I hope you all can attend, you all will be getting invitations. It is, if you have not been before, I really suggest, I know it's a busy time of year, but it is a really worthwhile event, and bring your Kleenex with you, in a positive way. Positive Kleenex. Any questions or comments?
Questions?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm calling on them. So I'm a huge supporter of the program, I think it's fantastic. Of this Graduation Alliance, does the graduation rate still, is it similar for those students?
Their statistics are really good offhand, I can't quote them. And it's a brand-new program. So we're going to see how it does with our program. Now, they've got their national statistics, they're a national program.
I see.
Some districts have been really happy with their, with it. And I think so far, it seems to be going pretty well. I mean, they're being successful with students that we weren't able to be.
So are our teachers involved in that program or that process?
No, no, once they leave the program, they generally do not come to the building except for the testing. You know, they can come in, some of them come and see the counselor, social worker still once in a while, their teacher consultant if they're an IEP student. We definitely aren't cutting them off. We're maintaining that relationship with the students that wish to do that or need that support. Our record secretary, Ms. Vaca, is absolutely terrific. And, you know, she looks at the report every month and the students that she's, she knows, she reaches out to them if they're struggling or are not doing as well as we hoped, as well as the counselor or myself and the dean of students. So it's, it seems to be a real positive so far. And we'll continue to examine it, goes on. As I said, some districts have not been happy with it, but I think they were more hands-off. And we're continuing to treat them, you know, they are our students.
Great.
And we want to make sure that they're ready for the next step as well.
That's all right.
And I will say, they do a night, they have a course, required course, that really is kind of like our senior seminar course. So they are really looking at their post-secondary outcomes as well.
Great, that's excellent. So the other question I had was, do we see students that move into the program at Starkweather and then move back to the park? Or is it generally that they move to Starkweather and stay there?
Yeah, they can come back to the park. We do have usually two or three a year now. Most students, we do have a lot of students every year that come to Starkweather and say, oh yeah, I'm going to come here, catch up on my credits and go back. What happens is they get to Starkweather, they enjoy it, they're successful, they enjoy the relationships, you know, the wonderful staff that we have, and they want to stay. I have to say, honestly, some of the, moving back is parent-motivated. Or the biggest thing is if they're involved in an after-school activity at the park. While they're at Starkweather, they can still be involved in that, but without transportation to get back, or even if they have, you know, transportation, it's just, it's not as convenient. And as I said, most will go back if they're in a sports team or really active in a club.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Remember Lozaro Wits?
Yeah, I got a question. So it's like from ninth to 12th grade or what's the grades?
It is 10th to 12th grade. Students, to transfer to Starkweather, a student, we do want them to try and go to the park for one year. We do accept students out of districts, so we want them to go to traditional high school for one year. Because obviously, there's things that the park offers that we absolutely can't offer just because of size in the hopes that they'll get connected with something at the park. There's also, because we have adult debt also, and we don't have a lot, actually, this year we didn't have any adults in the high school program. But in the, most years, we have like three or four adult students in our high school program. And we can't schedule adult students with anybody who's under the age of 16. So students have to be at least 15 on September 1. And so we can continue to schedule them and support them. And there's also a certain degree of maturity. It does change the culture if you've got first-year high school students. It really does change the culture of the school and the needs. And I think it, you know, it's not, it's good for our students that have not been successful at the park to be in a place where there are not younger students.
Okay, and you said there's 85 students at the park or at?
There's 85 students in the Graduation Alliance. The Starkweather brick and mortar program, there's about 200.
Okay, and there's 85 that are going to graduate in June?
We usually have about 60 that, 60 that actually complete that last, those final few credits.
And the ones that don't, do they come back later?
Most do come back. With the Graduation Alliance program this year, you know, some of those students went to Graduation Alliance just to finish up those last couple credits because they were working, a lot of them, you know, they'd start, they could work full-time and just finish up that last class or two, and they wouldn't have to stay the whole semester to finish with a class. Because at Graduation Alliance, if they work hard, they can finish a class in a month or less.
Life happens, right?
Yeah, yeah, so they, a lot of students are ready to move on with their life.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just wanted to say, if anybody knows me, I'm always kind of skeptical of mission and belief statements. And I have to say, I'm really impressed with yours and I love them, so. I also want to put in another plug for the Starkweather graduation. Those of us who have been before know, it's just a very moving ceremony and very worthwhile to go to.
It really is.
So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Bender?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Berninski. And teachers across the district provide high-quality, direct instruction to meet the needs of the students who are in front of them. In addition, technology is integrated into classrooms for use by students as a resource to further their learning, communicate, and create. This evening, members of the technology team will provide an overview of how leveraging the power of technology can meet the needs of students. Beginning the presentation this evening is Dr. Andrew Steinman, Associate Director of Integrated Technology Systems.
Thank you, Dr. Bender. Good evening, everyone. I'm Andrew Steinman, Associate Director of Technology here. And I'm here with three of my colleagues, Mark Salzer, Rick Coghlan, and Matt Smoot. And we're here to talk to you about some of the technology integration that's happening in our classrooms throughout the district. Just to give you an outline of what we'll be presenting, we start with some statements of appreciation. We'll move on to just some connections of technology integration with our district mission, vision, and belief statements, and then talking about how technology integration connects with instruction and standards. And then we'll provide just a brief, very small snapshot of our technology that's in the district. And then we'll get into our showcases of technology integration that's happening in our classrooms throughout the district. And we'll conclude with just kind of a, an overview of where we see technology integration going forward, what we're going to keep in mind if we continue to integrate technology. I also want to draw your attention to, there's actually a glossary of terms. We're going to be using a lot of, I guess, technical jargon. We'll try to not use too much and explain some things that are a little bit more complicated. But there is a glossary of terms. If you're less familiar with some of these terms, you can reference that as well. So first, we recognize that technology integration couldn't happen with just the technology department. It requires a lot of different stakeholders, and so we want to thank them today. So first, it begins with thank you all, the board, for your continued support of technology in the district. We also want to thank the community for your support with the 2013 bond that helped bring over $18 million worth of technology into our district. I want to thank the staff for their efforts to integrate technology in new ways that meets the needs of all learners. And thank students for their enthusiasm to use technology to support their own learning needs. And also, some of the volunteers that helped put together this presentation. You'll see that there's several individuals, both staff members and even parents, that helped put this together. So when we integrate technology, we keep the district's mission, vision, and belief statements in mind. And you'll see highlighted on the slide deck, just some of the ways that we consider these. We want to make sure that students are global citizens, that they're critical thinkers, that they're lifelong learners, that we're using technology in innovative ways that provide new learning opportunities. And we also want to make sure that we're promoting equity and ensuring that we're closing that achievement gap. And also, we have to keep in mind best practice instruction and the standards that we teach. And so when we integrate technology, we're making sure that it's focused around those best-practice instructional models, and also making sure that we're focused on the Michigan academic standards at the center, and also considering our Michigan Integrated Technology Standards and the National ISTI standards for students. So there are people here that may not be as familiar with the technology that we have in the district. So we wanted to provide just a brief snapshot, just to provide some context for the technology and how it's integrated. So we have about 4,000 iPads in our district, 12,000 Chromebooks, a 10 gigabit per second connection to the internet, which in layman's terms is a really good connection to the internet. And connected to that internet, we have about 7,000 district devices for students. And we also have about 2,000 student devices that are connected to that. And this is at any point in time, so it's just about an average, so it fluctuates. But that really tells us that we have a lot of students bringing their own devices to help them learn. And on the right hand of this slide, you can see in the past six months, looking at our Google usage, we have over 14 million emails, nearly 2 million files that have been added to Google Drive, and almost half of those, actually more than half of those, have been shared. And we have over 2,000 video hangouts. So this shows a high level of collaboration that's happening throughout our district. So how is all this technology being used? Well, to answer that question, we are going to showcase nine classrooms. And I just want to emphasize that these are just small samples of the technology integration that's happening throughout our district. So please keep in mind that what you'll see today is happening in other classrooms and other schools throughout our district. And these pictures here are just some samples of that. And so with that, I'm going to pass this off to Matt Smoot.
Good evening, thank you very much for having us, really excited to be here. And today, I'm going to be talking to you about some of the amazing things that are happening at some of our elementary schools, and how teacher, and how technology is really affecting the way that teachers teach and the way that students learn. So we're first going to start over at Workman. We're going to be in Deanna Coghlan's classroom. Deanna's a third-grade teacher, and she really want to take in what blended learning could look like for her students. If you don't know about blended learning, blended learning is basically taking a face-to-face interaction and also meeting with an online component, and really taking that in to make sure there's differentiation for all the students in her class. So we're showcasing a video to show you.
Because Plymouth Canton became a one-to-one district, I was able to change my math instruction. It was something I had been hoping to do, but didn't really have the resources to do until we were a one-to-one district. I decided to use a station-rotation model because I really felt that I needed to use small groups. The students have three stations that they rotate through each day. One of them is a new lesson video, which I pre-record and post in Google Classroom, and they watch the video of me teaching the concept. And I try to make it very engaging, where they might use manipulatives or follow along in some way. And that lesson that they learn is what we will practice in teacher time the next day. Another one of the stations that they rotate through is called teacher time. And during teacher time, that is when they meet with me in a small group. And we are generally using the smartboard and practicing the skill that they learned in their new lesson video the day prior. This is a great opportunity for differentiated instruction. Depending on the group that I'm working with, I might have different examples that we work with. We might work at a slower or faster pace. Sometimes we even work on something beyond what grade level is. However, we're focused on the same learning target, no matter what, unless it isn't applicable to that group. The third station that they will rotate through is their group or individual practice. And that looks different each day, sometimes they're working Sometimes they're working alone on practicing a skill. It might be in iXL, it might be a game, it might be some sort of activity, or sometimes they work in partners or groups. We use Seesaw a lot in this time to practice skills or showcase their learning. But this is also a great time for differentiated instruction, because I can assign different activities for each group or individual based on what they need.
So Deanna talked about it a little bit, but she's using what's called a station-rotation model. And in blended learning, there's actually several different models. There's a flex model, a flipped classroom, and she's using a station-rotation. If you think about a traditional classroom, you might use a vertical alignment, a vertical lesson, where you start with a whole-group lesson, you then move to maybe a small group with some individual instruction, and then you might do some online work. Well, in a station-rotation model, you're basically taking that but splitting it up horizontally, so each group can be dedicated towards that individual student's area and level, which is really helping to really attack that achievement gap and really making sure that the instruction is differentiated. For our next one, we're going to stay at Workman and look in at Amy Ross's class. Amy Ross is an EL teacher at Workman. And I want to reiterate that a lot of these programs that are happening are not just at singular places, it's happening all over the district. And this translation app that we're showing you, Microsoft Translate, is actually available in all of our schools. And what you're going to notice in this video, in this next video, is students saying live their native language and then being transcribed live for the teacher as well as other students. In this EL classroom, the students are using Microsoft Translate with their Chromebooks to have a conversation about classroom content and are responding to reading questions in real time in Japanese, Portuguese, Spanish, and English, while the students learn more conversational English in the process. Watch how this English learner uses speech-to-text technology as Microsoft Translate translates for her teacher, helping to remove a barrier to communication around class content and learning.
You sit in a sentence, say, "to explore a cave."
So again, because of this technology, we can now remove that barrier that was before with languages. What's really also nice about Microsoft Translate is, is the parent communication end. Because parents can use their smartphone, excuse me, or their computers at home, it's a unique link, and so parents can communicate with the teacher, or kids can communicate with other kids throughout the year. Next, we're going to head over to Erickson. Christine Rushlow is a resource room teacher at Erickson, and she was really trying to find a way to differentiate well for her students with IEPs. And for this, she's going to be using Read and Write for Google. So we'll show you a video next and talk a little bit about what Read and Write does for the students. Imagine this written response to classroom reading content taking 15 minutes to produce. This is frustrating to students and a barrier to the content and being able to demonstrate their learning. With the help of a one-to-one Chromebook and Read and Write for Google, students can produce a response like this to class content in less than five minutes and feel even more confident in their learning. Listen carefully as this student demonstrates speech-to-text technology.
Just play and have fun. If it's you and it is good, but it's most just a matter of having fun again.
With one-to-one Chromebooks, students are able to hear any text being read to them so that they can better respond to class content. Notice how the text is highlighted for the student as they read. As we consider the principles of universal design for learning, we know that technologies like this reduce barriers or remove barriers to maximize learning opportunities. And what Read and Write, Read and Write for Google can do is not just that, but show picture dictionaries, have annotation features, and really making sure that there's no opportunity gap, that we're lessening that through the technology, and the kids are getting a personalized learning experience. And lastly, we'll be heading over to Dodson. Beth Sexton, the media specialist at Dodson, has really made an emphasis on coding, K through 5. And coding is something that we are talking about throughout the entire district, K through 12. And the great thing about coding is, it's universal and it's being used in all of our schools. So take a look at some of the cool things that they are doing.
After being exposed to McCall for the last four years and looking at the ISTE and the AASL standards, the things that stand out are the need for information technology skills, coding skills, and the ability to work with others to solve problems. According to an article I read on Fast Copy, 7 million job openings in 2015 were in occupations that require coding skills, and programming jobs overall are growing 12% faster than the market average. We also know that the majority of careers require some kind of computer and technology skills. With that in mind, I've been trying to build a robot army that would begin in kindergarten with Coda pillars and Colby mice, and first grade, B-bots and Botleys, second and third grade, Dash, and fourth and fifth grade, Spheros. Our motto in PCCS is to be college and career-ready. I think having this mini-curriculum in the elementary schools is the first step to achieving this for a generation of kids who will need these 21st-century skills to have a successful future. We are so fortunate to have this partnership with Bosch. I truly appreciate their goals of supporting schools to give us the opportunity to introduce the skills their company and others will need in their future employees.
I tried to get Arnold Schwarzenegger to do a voiceover about the robot army, but he really wasn't taking my call, so I apologize for that. So through coding, it's really about mastery and problem-solving skills. Taking a larger task and breaking it into smaller sequential, that are logical steps, diagnosing errors, and really making sure that coming up with new approaches. Again, through the work with Bosch and the amazing partnerships that we've been to have, also this next year, we're very thankful to Bosch for providing a makerspace for every elementary classroom to really think about design thinking and really making sure that we're really helping the kids in differentiating their learning. I'm now going to welcome up my colleague, Rick Coghlan.
Thank you, Matt. My name is Rick Coghlan. I thank you for inviting us here tonight. Excited to share with you some of the great work our colleagues are doing. Matt and I are technology integration specialists here in the district. We work with staff and students in integrating technology into the classroom. So I would first like to share an example from Jamie Wells's classroom over at Liberty Middle School. She differentiates in her classroom and wants to meet all of her learners' needs, and she's employing something called universal design for learning. The idea of universal design, without going in too deep, it offers students with different learning needs, because we're all unique learners, to access information in different ways. And technology allows us to do that. Again, going with that blended learning idea of more one-on-one time with the teacher, small-group work, and then an online component. And included in that, in what you'll see in the video, is that students are offered more voice and choice in the way they learn as individuals, and giving them multiple opportunities to access the same content.
Blended learning for me gives me the freedom to work with my students on a one-to-one basis. My students benefit by taking charge of their own learning. Through technology, I'm able to create choices based upon key standards. Some of those resources I might use are NearPod, EdPuzzle, DesmoGraphs, and interactive games they enjoy. All this would not be possible without Google Classroom. My students enjoy blended learning through stations. They can collaborate with classmates, focus in at the solo zone, or sit and get with me. Some students take advantage of all three zones throughout the hour. A bonus for me is I'm able to collect great data through Google Forms as I plan out the next day's lessons. Using technology in my classroom allows me to experiment more in my pedagogy and get instant feedback.
You see, she mentioned lots of different technologies that they're using, and I, you know, encourage you to check any of those out when you have time. There are some amazing tools that teachers are using in the classroom. What you saw, she had three zones set up in her classroom. The nice thing about zone learning is that it can be organic and flexible in terms of what, you know, the content is or the classroom. So she used three zones, there can be more depending on what the content is. So the teacher, or absorb zone, or consulting zone, where's, is where the, you know, teacher can work one-on-one, and the students can come as an, as needed basis. There's the collaboration zone, you saw students talking to each other, collaborating, working problems out together. That's a powerful way to learn. And then there's the solo zone. Some of us like to just focus in and get through the learning in that way. I think as adults, we can identify with that as well. So we'll stay at Liberty for Tracy Stop's classroom. She wanted to use virtual reality to help her students understand some complex science phenomenon, specifically plate tectonics. So she used something called NearPod, which is a student-based or a student-paced program that allows some of the students to be working on that, while again, she's floating around the room, working with students individually or in small groups. And then the students you'll see also experiencing virtual reality with the help of the VR glasses.
The purpose of today's lesson was to have students find evidence for when two plates interact, the geologic features and events that are common on Earth, such as volcanoes, mountains, trenches, and earthquakes. So with the virtual reality, then the NearPod virtual field trip, students actually went in to the volcano through the virtual reality and had a true submersive experience with going through and seeing what happens with inside a volcano and why that lava comes up. Students also got an opportunity with the virtual field trips to look at a real-life fault line and how that transforms into a volcano, as well as going through and really forcing themselves to think about what evidence is provided for the transform boundary. Without this, I don't think students would have a nice visual as well as really understand the content as much, because they are going through and actually seeing it in real life as opposed to a drawing.
So, you know, virtual reality offers students a way to really see the things that are being described more than a, you know, a static picture. And it also provides a certain amount of equity in the sense that, you know, some of us may have been able to travel and actually see these things in real life. Some of us may never travel to see these things in real life, but gaining that increased understanding in an immersive experience, I think, is extremely important. And there's a lot of different ways that VR can be used, and I'm very excited about the possibilities in the future as more content gets developed for the technology. We're going to move on to the high school, and this is Starkweather, so it's appropriate that we're talking about Starkweather. Megan Tyler is a high school social studies teacher and video editing teacher over there at Starkweather, and her students are using something called Flipgrid to provide student peer feedback to each other and as well to the teacher. And Flipgrid is sort of like a message board, a video message board, maybe a little Instagram-like in a sense. It's a way for the teacher to post topics. It's a closed environment, it's not, it's not open, it's close to the classroom, and people are only invited as the teacher sees. And students can post their video responses, so rather than responding and, you know, writing, which of course is appropriate to do sometimes, this offers students a different way to respond to each other in a way that they're pretty familiar with.
My favorite part about Flipgrid and using Flipgrid in my video production class is that students are able to directly respond to each other and talk about the projects they did and create a video peer review versus just writing something on a sheet of paper. The students also enjoy seeing each other's projects, engaging with each other. The cameras that we use allow them to create new pieces of art, new pieces of video production. An overall increasing the technology in this class has made it more interactive for the kids, and I think they're having more fun while learning about producing videos and creating video projects.
I mean, I think it gives students a chance to, you know, enhance and learn at the beginner's level, using iMovie along with Flipgrid, being able to submit short films, and just being able to reply to other classmates, being able to send short texts, comments. I think it gives kids a big, wide-open benefit and a good, you know, of like, just see what's coming ahead, like it gives them a good heads-up.
So similar to the sort of blended learning format, students in Ms. Tyler's class are using that technology to respond to each other and really do things a little bit differently than traditional work might be done. You can see the students are also still, you know, writing on paper. It's just another tool, but a powerful one, when you can respond to your peers in video and in real time, you hear intonation and voice and inflection, and you can really get a sense of how, how you're being responded to for your videos. And really, this is all in the interest of preparing students for the kinds of technology that they'll use out in the world. This is an example of gamification. I think gamification is very exciting. We all know that young people like video games. I know a lot of people my age that like video games. But this brings gamification in the classroom. Matt Sexton over at Plymouth is using iCivics. It's a platform that helps students understand civics in an authentic and interesting way. I'll let him explain.
Hello, I'm Mr. Sexton. We're working on iCivics. It's an online platform to add competition and gamification to the classroom. It's, we're working on fiscal policy at the moment and monetary policy, and it's using the federal budget process. My students here, as you could see, are using technology effectively. We love it, it's a great opportunity for my students. One of the things my students miss out on is how our world is evolving. And one thing that technology has done is it bridges that gap. And I appreciate this technology, especially with iCivics, is I wouldn't be upset, I would just be simply up there lecturing. And I'm not a lecturer. I would like to have my students have that opportunity of reaching into any type of topic and kind of sifting through research or information at the snap of their fingers, and that's what this technology does.
So again, gaming is something that our young people are familiar with, and many of us older folks too. But they're very collaborative in nature. Gamers can be very productive, and there's, it really is a way to present real-world content and authentic problem-solving scenarios through gamification. You know, Mr. Sexton is doing some amazing stuff, but that really allows him to be more of the guide on the side rather than the sage on the stage, not always presenting in a lecture format. And that's a powerful thing. We'd also like to highlight some of the great work that the assistive technology folks are doing, and I think they're still here tonight, so that's awesome. This is highlighting a tool used with one of our students with an IEP who's nonverbal, which makes it difficult for her to communicate with teachers and her peers. And it's through this Tobii device, it actually enables her to communicate verbally.
Hello, everyone. This is Maggie. This is her parent, Julie. And they're going to show you how Maggie communicates without technology.
Maggie, how was your day today? Good or bad? It was good. Are you ready to go home? Yes or no? Yes.
Our daughter uses technology to get through her day, and if she did not have this access, I do not think that we would have a very positive behavior situation. And we are very grateful to Plymouth Canton and their technology team for finding accessible things, for finding things that make it so that she can access everything in the classroom just like an able-bodied child.
I can't wait to see Becky.
So obviously, those binary questions, the technology makes it possible to not be just bound to that, that way of communicating. And of course, that technology is always progressing. I think it's just remarkable. So I'd like to thank the assistive technology folks for the good work that they're doing. Really, technology in the service of reducing opportunity gaps and, you know, equitable situations is part of the big focus, and it can really do a lot. It's been very powerful for all of us, I think. So I'd like to turn it over to Mark Salzer. Thank you.
Good evening. First, thank you all very much for the opportunity to come and share a sense of what's happening in all of our classrooms. We're very excited about it. We're hopeful that you're finding it exciting, too. As a district, we remain focused on high-quality instruction since we know that it's going to elevate all of our students, it's going to close gaps, it's going to address equity issues. To that end, we're trying to be very thoughtful and productive with how we're integrating technology to support robust student learning. And I'm going to flip this to this question. So as we close tonight, I'm going to offer you some visual responses to this question. How do we continue to support student learning through the integration of technology? So first, we're going to, and it's in no particular order, I shouldn't say first. We're going to continue to actively use technology to foster more student-centered learning spaces. We know that technology can enable student choice and voice and agency, and we want to continue to foster that. We're going to continue to actively use technology to find new ways to learn and interact with our community and our world. As in the example shown, technology can let us interact in new ways with people on the outside, experts, scientists, authors. And in turn, it can allow our students to travel from their classrooms without actually leaving their classrooms. We will continue to use technology to learn and work with new languages, including coding, and explore how we might be able to integrate them into the core content areas as well as explore new ways of thinking that they offer. We will continue to explore and work with emerging technologies as they, among other things, nourish student creativity and curiosity. Depicted as a MASH machine, it's a revolutionary music-making machine that uses QR codes and cameras to create music. You can find it at the park. Howard can certainly tell you that. It's helping students unleash their inner musician. But we're looking for innovative technologies. We see them as one of the hooks to bring students in to that next level. We will continue to find ways that technology can be used to facilitate project and problem-based projects in which students develop collaboration, communication, and critical thinking skills. Depicted are some students in the Adela class that was recently supported by the board. This is an elective class that combines ELA and Agile Development. It's a computer science. And it's a student-run course in which students learn to work as a functioning business within that Agile development model. The technology department will continue to work ever more closely with the curriculum team to support teachers integrating technology in effective ways with both new and existing curriculum. We're actually doing some of that work right now in the lead-up to the introduction of new science curriculum. This also includes implementing instructional rounds and coaching, modeling best practices, job-embedded PD, and training with online components. We're working with staff in various venues to explore and consider new technologies and classroom practices. And we practice what we preach. Following best-practice instructional models and utilizing innovative technologies in our professional development opportunities for staff. In this picture, we're not doing a sit-and-get. This staff member is immersed in virtual reality experience in advance of consideration for how she might use it with her students. We're going to continue to work with the train-the-trainer model, actively working as a staff to learn and implement best practices, promoting in turn a growth mindset and a sense of collegiality while offering peer support. And that is also in our conference programming. We now have a blended uncamp or unconference style. And I'm going to end with a quote by George Kuros, a well-known educator and principal that all of us, the four of us have met and a number of other people in the room. He reminds us that in the right hands, technology can be transformational. Thank you. And if you have any questions, we're happy to take them.
Member Sido.
I just have a comment. So we got to see this in SPA, and I encouraged them to bring in the VR glasses so we could feel and be immersed in that experience. So, but they thought that we might get carried away.
Imagine that.
Imagine that. So. But it's great work that's been going on. Thanks.
Thank you.
Member Lazarowitz, do you have a question?
I have a question. My computer doesn't work. Can you help me out? I'm not joking either. I must have did something. I took it offline. I have no idea what I'm doing.
I'll come help.
Thank you. Appreciate it so much. I know. It couldn't be any better.
Member Keough.
Yeah, just a fantastic presentation. I'm really excited about this work and the things that we're doing. I'm anxious to see how we take the programs that are done in the different schools and share those amongst each other to take the best of those things and leverage those things up. I know that we've got some real innovators that are out there working with you and your teams and really doing some great stuff, and I hope that we can share that more broadly across the district. So, good stuff.
Shared hope.
It's fixed.
Member McCoy.
I helped them.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
I don't have my team.
I don't have a question, but this was great. I love to see how this technology is being incorporated in classrooms. It's just amazing to me. Great job.
Anybody else?
So the last thing I'd say is, I liked the fact that you incorporated the video there because you really made it real in terms of what's happening. So what Ms. McCoy said really helps us to see that. You know, a lot of times, we see people come to these sessions and they bring a few teachers and they talk about it. But this really helped to solidify it and see the diversity of the things that are happening. So it was really exciting.
Thanks for that feedback.
And I'll say I saw it in SPA and the second time around, it was still really exciting. So, thank you. All right, next up, we have a couple of action items tonight. First is Action Item 190579. Consider Approval of Resolution for Local District Vote on Wayne Risa Budget. This is a first and final reading. May I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of the resolution for local district vote on the Wayne Risa budget. First and final reading, Action Item 190579.
Second.
Okay. The motion was made by Member Keough and seconded by Member Brooks. Member Sido, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just want to make sure that I publicly abstain from this. As I work at Wayne Risa, I want to make sure there's no conflict of interest. So I will be abstaining in this action item and the next one.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion on this? This is something that we do every year. And we've received all the materials from Wayne Risa. And I'll say if we... If you want to approve this, please vote aye right now.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion carried five votes, one abstention. Okay. And next is Action Item 190580. Consider Approval of Resolution Designating Our Local District's Wayne Risa Election Representative. This is a first and final reading. We'll do the motion, and then we need to have a discussion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution designating the local district's Wayne Risa election representative. First and final reading, Action Item 190580.
Second.
Okay. So we need to discuss who will be going. And also, Liz, were you able to find out the time?
I'll have to make a call to them in the morning. Let them let you know.
Okay. Okay, so we're not quite sure what time the election is taking place.
Let's handle it.
Yes. So we need someone probably with a flexible schedule. And it's taking place on June 3rd. So is there anyone who would like to be the designee?
I'm the definition of non-flexible schedule.
True.
I'm with you. Also can't do things unless it's after the end of the school day.
Right. Right, and we're not sure.
And we don't know.
Process of elimination.
So I don't know about Member Lazarowitz.
Working that day in the morning. I apologize.
Okay, well, it's me or you, Doug, right?
Yeah.
Would you like to go?
Oh, yeah.
Are you okay with going?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the designee.
I don't know what time it is.
Yeah, Liz. I will let you know in the morning.
Thank you.
Okay. So all in favor of Doug Brooks being our designee to go vote in the Wayne Risa election, to cast our vote for us, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion carries five ayes and one abstention. Okay, now we are at follow-up board questions. And we have a few things outstanding. On our outstanding list, we had Custodial to Share the Highs and Lows by Category at the next KPI presentation in May. That's still outstanding because we haven't had that meeting yet. And the new benchmarks for Custodial. That was going to be discussed at FNO, is that correct?
Yeah, we'll discuss that at the next FNO meeting or at the FNO meeting when we deal with the benchmarks.
The length of the lease for the GOLs facility, I think that was in board notes. Okay, so we can take that one off. Number of students in the Cooperative Education Services Programs. That was in board notes also. Okay. Spreadsheet for discipline data that was received. We got that, I believe.
Yes.
Do you know when it came?
I think that was the first Friday of the, right after the meeting.
Was it in board notes?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe I just missed it as a link.
I think it was two weeks ago, board notes.
Okay, thank you.
Let me know if I need to send it to you.
I'll look.
Max and minimum number of students for class sizes. We got something on that, too. In board notes, yeah.
I think that was a two weeks ago.
Again, two weeks, so maybe I missed the board notes from two weeks ago.
Yeah, let us know if you didn't get it.
I'll let you know if I'm missing something.
Okay. I did not write anything down from tonight so far, so is there anything that I missed? Okay. All right. Okay, then. Next, we are at H, which is adjourned to a special meeting on school start and end times. Could I have a motion to adjourn to the special meeting, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to our special meeting.
Second. Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Sido. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay. We are now... Do people want a quick, like, three-minute break?
Yes, please.